I would like to, we'll begin our council meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. The meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. I call on the city clerk, Alvin Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Heath Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the sunshine and the blue skies that we're able to enjoy, Father. We thank you for the many blessings that we take for granted. We thank you for salvation and that wonderful opportunity you freely give us most of all. Father, I pray for this council and administration, Father, this city. Lord, we just, we pray that we always honor and glorify you with the decisions we make, with the words that we say, with the thoughts in our hearts. Lord, we just give you all the praise for all that you've already done and promised to do, and just pray that you use us however you see fit to do so in fulfilling your purpose. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'd like to begin our meeting today with an update from EMA, Ms. Gaither.
Good morning.
Numbers are looking, I'm sorry, phone started ringing. Numbers are looking better. If you remember, we talked probably three weeks ago about mid-February, we thought the numbers would begin to go down. And in doing that, it, they have started. So next week, we look for a bigger decrease than we have. Our state's positivity rate is 25.1%. Edwah County still remains one of the highest at 35.9, but that's much better than we were two weeks ago. So we really, that's really good news. Also, there was a new database that was installed and it's repopulating, new software that was installed to the new database, and it's repopulating numbers. And once that catches up over the weekend, then we'll have more accurate figures again. But we are sure about our death rate right now. And this year, since January the 1st, there's been 22 deaths in Edwah County. We're still at a high transmission rate. We continue to encourage our citizens to use their local practitioners, their health department, and others, Quality of Life, any agency that can to test them and vaccinate them. Our emergency rooms are not our testing sites, nor our vaccination sites. That is very important. And for some reason, we cannot get a lot of our citizens to understand that our emergency rooms are not testing sites or vaccination sites. So if we can get that word out in any way possible, please help us with that. That will help in the long run, too, I think, on some issues that are happening in our emergency rooms. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, I do.
Uh huh.
I was doing a podcast and giving them the numbers and telling them to not go to the emergency room, the emergency room unless it was a true emergency because of the weight. But then one question was going to the doctor's med care and stuff like that. Do we know, do we have a 24-hour doctor's med care where people could walk in?
Um, no. Not that I'm aware of a 24-hour location that will test or vaccinate.
Well, you know, not even just for that, but when they have a minor injury-
Right, right.
-or sickness where they won't have to go to the emergency room.
And Chief may be aware of another, he's going to give a report.
We don't have any 24-hour.
That's what I thought.
Okay. So they have no other choice after hours but to go to the emergency room.
Right. But if you just need a test, I believe that could wait till-
Oh, yeah.
-8:00 AM the next morning, or, yeah, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for all you all do.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Reed.
Good morning.
Um, I've got great news today. I have no firefighters out for the first time, and I can't remember when with COVID, so that's excellent. We've had, holding it 32 that have had it this round. As you were discussing with Ms. Gaither, I do not believe our community has any 24-hour urgent care centers open other than our two emergency rooms. And we don't want to dissuade anyone from going to an emergency room if they need it. But if, you know, if you have stuffy nose or something that can go to an urgent care during the day, it would be better. I've spoken to both hospitals over the last couple of days, and they both remain at or near capacity. We are averaging one PUI a day right now, so that has dropped tremendously from my last report. So hopefully, this is going to continue to be good news.
Chief, I met one of your firemen yesterday, Peyton Harden.
Yes, ma'am.
One of my former students.
Yes, ma'am. He's one of our new recruits.
Yes, what he just told me. So congrats, you got a good person.
He seems like a very nice guy.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
We will continue with our agenda today. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Work Committee work session and the city council meeting that was held February the 1st.
So move.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 28th through February the 3rd. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. Unfinished business. We have no council action that's necessary for the resolution for 822 North 34th Street in District 7. The nuisance was abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition. Two are in favor of a resolution of abatement of nuisance on property located at 1218 Windsor Street in District 1. This is John A. Hashbarger, also known as John F. Hashbarger, and Carolyn A. Hashbarger, also known as Carolyn A. Hashbarger, and Chris Griffin, ex-squire guardian, ad lit, subject to margin, in favor of Alpha Financial Cooperation being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Councilman Back.
Yes, sir.
Is there one speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in March of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 209 Knuckles Court. This is county records list of property as Knuckles Street in District 2, State of Alabama, possible right of redemption of Clifford Barkfield and the heirs of Virginia L. Barkfield, potential heirs listed as Clifford E. Barksville and Bobby Dale Barksville, being the last known owners. Are there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in April of last year. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this
What is the pledge of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next final hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1523 Gaston Avenue in District 3, and this is Monroe Bud Cameron being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? All right, if you'll come to the, can you come to the podium? Okay. Can you pull the mic, if you give us your name and address, please?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Monroe Bud Cameron. I live at 1523 Gaston Avenue, Gaston, Alabama.
What would, what did you want to tell us?
Well, I've been, I've been real sick for the last few months, and I had to have a operation. And they had to take a blood clot out and gave me a stent. But I'm getting well enough to go back to work now. And I know I'm in the reg, as far as my place, being cleaned up and everything. But I got a friend that been working on the inside while it's, you know, the weather's so bad. And, but we're, we will, we will get it cleaned up now, that, you know, the weather is getting better. And it won't take us long. And I've got a couple of friends that's going to come help me for free, you know, besides my other friend. I just need a bit of time now. You know, and I, I'm with y'all. I like a beautiful place and city, too. And before my cousins died next door, I kept both of those places immaculate. You know, the roofs, the yards, their maintenance and everything. And I do have a permit. Yes, ma'am. I just asked you for a little more time.
Okay. We're going to hear from our Building Department, Mr. Cameron.
Yes, ma'am.
If you'll just have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
If you'll just have a seat, we're going to hear from our Building Department, Mr. Harbison.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Madam President, this is the second time we filed a case on this particular property. We had a case back in 2013, worked with the owner until that was cleaned up. We filed a new case in January of 2021. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is this for debris only?
This is the, this is everything. The mobile home, someone living in a tent. When we filed the case, someone was living there without power. There's still no power, so it's everything.
Mr. Harbison, real quick, it looks like in this picture that the meter's been removed from the pole, so there's no power meter at all there.
Is anyone living there currently, do you know?
Currently?
Yeah.
No, it's supposed to be.
Sir, you're not living in a mobile home right now, are you?
Yes, ma'am.
And you have no power? That's illegal.
Well, I went over and put up a deposit about four years ago, and they wasn't turning it on for me because they said they needed the building department to call them and, you know, and they said where they could turn it on. And there's nothing wrong with my power, so I didn't. I just moved one time and stayed over the towel for about four years, and they had it cut off. And when I moved back, they wouldn't cut it on for me. It was your helping a lot if they would have, you know, let me get my power on.
Yes, sir, okay.
Mr. Cameron, this looks like a very, very dangerous place to occupy.
No, sir, I've waited for power and everything. And we don't, we can't run it all the time, we got a money wire, you know?
Yes, sir.
Gas and everything go out.
We're going to try to get you some help, sir, but we'll leave it at that.
What is the pledge of the council?
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a first reading. This is an ordinance amending the City Code Section 6-45 regarding applications for alcoholic beverage licenses. And this would require that the criminal background report provided by the applicants be no more than six months old. It also deletes wording regarding criminal investigation concerning the administrative review. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Do we have any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one, please. It's a authorizing agreement with Thomas M. McRat for the Senior Wellness Center, which is to be built at the old Ait Community Center. Ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt. Are we on discussions now?
Yes.
The City of Gaston is moving forward plans to construct a new facility in the Alabama City Community. Everything's underway. It's going to be a 10,000 to 13,000 square foot senior wellness centers. It's going to be with old Ait Community Center, Ait School is, old Ait Elementary School, and Ait Community Center. Whereas everybody knows it's got asbestos in it and mold, lead-based paint, and it's just not really worth fixing. The Ait Community Center's not. It hadn't been, any work done on that since 1980, and the city's kind of let it drift by the side, I guess. That's why we're trying to get this wellness center built. The Wellness Center will have a large activity banquet room with exercise, walking, dances, cooling stations, and a heating station. Also, a kitchen area for the senior nutrition program, outdoor and courtyard dining, classrooms. They'll have telehealth, health screening, Medicare and Social Security assistance, computer training. And the recreation room will have weights, pool table, cards game, putting greens. Also, the Council of Aging will have offices there. The senior community garden will be there, pickleball court outside, and also an outdoor walking trail. And I know everyone in Alabama City will enjoy this, and, you know, the whole City of Gaston will enjoy it.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, we have citizen requests. We ask that you state your name for the record, and please limit your remarks to five minutes. We have Robert Hunter, reallocation of unused funding.
Hi, my name's Robert Hunter. I live at 1109 Sixth Avenue, and I wanted to talk about what I had spoken about the last two times I've been up here specifically on bringing youth services to the City of Gaston in a more holistic way. So one of the things that I noticed at another city council meeting I was at, I think, last year, was we have somewhere between 18 and 19 police officer openings that have yet to be filled. For those to be on the books, we would already have the pay scale there, correct? Like the money to actually pay them. If we have, well, I'd say somewhere between, if it's, on the average, $30,000 for a police officer, you're looking at somewhere between half a million dollars sitting unused. My suggestion would be to take two of those unfilled police officer slots and build out of youth services for roughly $60,000 over two years. If those slots come up and they're needed to be filled at a later date, it can just be a one-year financial study, if you want to put it that way. In that distinct area for $60,000-ish dollars, most of it would go into services, programs, and studies in the year two. Year one would just be probably me or someone else building out the ability to build the department. And my suggestion on that would just simply be, I have no problem doing it unpaid, but I would love to have two interns, specifically a senior and junior from Gaston City, work that has some interest in municipal government. The only downside, of course, would be, the first thing they said is the inability to pay for those same police officers at the moment, which, if, I remember, we're still looking for said police officers. So even if all 18 or 19 of those open slots come up next year, that money is still there for this year for us to be able to use it. I was hoping to take this to the city, specifically the city council, because y'all would cover funding. I just found it to be better to try to work through the city rather than around the city. This would be the first time I've had to do that with me having to open up the free store and our own community center, which is, if I remember correctly, one of the only active community centers just through District 1 through 3. I was just hoping that there'd be some way to work around, and if not possible, that's completely understandable. I'll just have to find another way or take it to the county level. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Have you applied for funding from the United Way?
Yes, we have.
Okay. I was, I was misinformed then. I was, I was told that you guys had, and was that funding denied?
Not that I know of. One second. I don't know if the clock is still running, but I don't want to take up any time.
No, it's fine. If you guys have actually applied, that's fine. I was, I reached out after our conversation last week on the allocation of funds, and I just, because the United Way, like we talked about earlier today, we gave them $275,000 specifically as a pass-through entity for local communities. I just didn't know what the status, if you have applied for the United Way funding, what the status of that application was. Have you, was it denied? Did you guys receive funding? Have they not gotten back to you?
Another member had applied for it. I have to check back with them after this meeting.
Yeah, well, let's look, because I can help follow up with the United Way and see if we can't get you some funding that you're looking for through them. All right?
All right, thank you.
Joseph Cole, recruitment of police and fire department officers, officers and community
Good morning. This is Black History Month, and I would like to give recognition to three individuals who did a first in Alabama on black history. One of those individuals is Mayor Sherman Geitham. You don't necessarily have to be black to be involved in black history. Years ago, the mayor was the first white coach in the City of Gaston to play an all-black sports team. And at that time, he was coaching at Alma Henson, and the school that he played was Robert Colley, which was located over near Galilee Baptist Church. After the mayor took that stand, then other white coaches began to call, and that's when the start of the whites and the blacks playing in the City of Gaston. I want to give him recognition for that. Secondly, Councilor David Williams, the first African-American black who has served as president of this city council. The third individual is Councilor Cynthia Toles, who's the first African-American female who was elected to the city council, and also the first African-American female to serve as president of the council. So I just want to give recognition to you all this morning. And on that note, I want to ask the council and the mayor to declare Juneteenth as a legal holiday for the City of Gaston. I don't think it's a better time than you can do that, but now during Black History Month. Dealing with the recruitment of the Gaston, the Police Department, next month, there will be 20 vacancies on the Police Department. That is approximately 20% of the force that you don't have working. So that puts a toll on the officers, all of the overtime. They are stretched out, they have to work every week, and there isn't any names on the list to be hired. I made a recommendation before, and I'm going to make it again, you probably won't accept it, but you should think about it and do along that line. If you were to authorize, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, a $5,000 sinus bonus, signing bonus for individuals who want to become police officers, I'm sure that list would fill up. Now, you talk about $5,000 for 20 individuals, you're talking about $100,000 set aside to hire police officers. But if you look at all the money that you're paying for overtime and also all the stress they're going through, it would be worth it to try to give, if not to fire, give something substantial that you can get people applying for the Police Department. I also recommend that you form a committee, and on that committee, you would have the Christian lady from finance, a member of council, the police chief, or one of his appointees to discuss and try to work together to come up with a plan that the mayor could accept, because something needs to happen. Because the police cannot continue to form like this, and it's also can be a safety value to the citizen of this city when you can't get the policemen out and you have 20 vacant officers, and that's a large number. So hopefully, we can work around and something can happen on that level. And dealing with recruitment of the Fire Department, excuse me, I will not do any more recruiting until something is done about this pay scale that they're working on. Once again, this committee that I told you about, instead of the police chief, the fire chief could work. If you can work around and get something close to what the municipalities in the area are paying their firefighters, and that would be a good step. Because the way it's going, the morale is down, and everybody know what they're getting now, and I didn't know it was going to blow up like it did. But something needs to be done. So if you pay what the other municipalities in the area is paying, that's me? That's me? Oh, I'm sorry. So that is the issue that we have there. So I think working this, I do know it's an election year. We can't wait till the national regime come in, because people are not going to start committing crimes. Fires may happen anywhere. So we do need to do something about this. I was supposed to speak on the civics, the different centers, but I'm having a meeting today with the Director of Parks and Recreation, and she will address the issues that I have for that. Thank you very much, Madam President, for allowing me this opportunity to speak.
Mr. Cole, we are, we're going to put that in the Finance Committee. I had an email sent about the Juneteenth holiday. The Chairman of the Finance Committee responded and said it'll be going into the Finance Committee.
Okay.
Okay, and also, we had a Parks and Recreation Subcommittee meeting this morning to deal with Parks and Rec.
Okay.
So, so I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for coming.
Remarts, Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Back?
I don't have anything, Madam President, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a, just a quick item. I want to express my appreciation to the Gaston Times for running the story regarding the Black History programs that are scheduled for, at the Gaston Public Library for the month of February. So please pay, pay close attention to those programs. Attend and support where you can. The Gaston Public Library does an excellent job every year of putting on various programs and bringing in speakers from, from many different areas to, to help speak to a lot of the Black History elements. So they do, they do an excellent job, always have, for as far back as I can remember. So please support those programs. A lot of good information will be, will be shared there. The only other thing that I have- The only other thing that I have is I want to take the opportunity to recognize two, a couple of our unsung heroes now. You know, please take this in its appropriate context. We have department managers and directors that do an outstanding job, and I could take up a lot of time trying to identify all the good work that a lot of our city workers do, but I want to, I want to recognize a couple. We heard from Heath Williamson today, uh, and Heath, uh, again, went through, uh, almost 30 projects, uh, that are underway in the city. Do appreciate him, uh, I want to thank him publicly for that. Uh, a lot of times, he does that with little notice, uh, and, uh, and not having the benefit of all of the information that, that he may need to give a good thorough report, so again, I appreciate that. And, and the other, the other individual that I'd like to recognize is Brian Harbison. Brian has the one job at City Hall that I would not have, um, and, and he, he does, and I say that jokingly, Brian, uh, Brian protects, uh, our interests relative to our housing stock in the city. Um, and, uh, and I want to, I want to tell you guys that, uh, more often than not, more often than people realize, he goes offline after some very difficult conversations and difficult presentations in the council meetings. He goes off, goes offline, and he helps people. And I don't think enough gets said about that. And, and I'm not telling you that that just happened, you know, five years ago, and that, I mean, five minutes ago, and that was the only time, uh, for, for the 12 years that I've been here, uh, and beyond that, because I've worked with Brian even beyond my time as an elected official. Uh, he's done that, and so, so again, I think, uh, I think before you're hypercritical of a lot of these guys, I, I think it's very important to understand the lengths that they go to, uh, to help people. And, and it's unfortunate, when you're dealing with personal property, uh, there's, there's not gonna always be positive outcomes, uh, but they do go to the nth degree, uh, because they understand that we don't want an individual's property. All we want is that the property be brought up to code and be maintained appropriately. That's it. That's it. The city is not in the real estate business, and if we did try to get in the real estate business, we probably couldn't do it well, because we, that's not our bailiwick, it's not our expertise. So thank you guys for all the hard work, and thank you for taking on those unsung responsibilities. That's all I got.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say, uh, the stuff that Mr. Cole was saying is true about the fire department. We have a dynamic fire department, and we need to, uh, pay them a little better. We have a dynamic police department. You go all over this state, and they talk about our fire department. We on the cutting edge, and we need to make them feel appreciated. It ain't all about the money, but if this city, if they feel like they're loved and cared for, they'll work harder, because the, as a business, the product is our service. And if they feel like they're appreciated and paid accordingly, uh, they will work even harder and better. And then, it's a, it's gonna be a safety issue if we keep losing officers. We had 20 officers, if soon, if not 20 right now, and we have to recruit better. We're gonna have to think outside of the box and try to, uh, get a better, a positive image of law enforcement, but so people will want to come and work this job. It's a calling, it's not a regular job. You got to love people to want to be a police officer and a fireman, because you're putting your life on the line every day. And we're going, I want to say I appreciate you, and that's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor, you have any comments? Councilman, uh, Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I do appreciate my council members helping today with getting the Wellness Center in Alabama City. The people will really enjoy that through the whole city, they can come out there, and I know it's gonna be a plus for everyone here, and I just appreciate y'all helping us out with that. And all of it was, uh, all the money we're using to do that is with the stimulus money, so it's not costing us anything, and also the fire department at Bank Spark is with the stimulus money, so that didn't cost the city anything, so we're just moving right ahead with all the projects we can.
Absolutely.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my remarks this morning, I hope, are gonna be on a positive note. I continued in the paper to see, or continued, reading the paper, how bad our, our airport is. So when I was sitting here during this meeting, I started jotting down a few things that, that probably go back to 1994, up to date. Our taxiways in 94 were bad, and they were all fixed and run in. Improvements on the runways, we're up to about, I'd say, a possibility of an 8,000-foot runway now, which would take most everything. We did the lighting on the runways, that was the biggest deal, I guess, and the most money, biggest expense we had. We had a group that wanted to close half the runway, the short one. We overcame that. And I'm gonna talk about our past, uh, chairman out there at the airport, and I won't even say names, but he had a whole lot to do with this whole thing, and, and it gets down to where I don't really appreciate the negative part, whenever the thing that he did has been positive, and everything he brought to that airport has been great. He sponsored the airport road. We winded it and paved it all the way from 77 to, uh, I believe that's what, 77 to what is Steel Station Road? We also gained ownership of all those buildings out there from the federal government, who had just redid, they redid all the buildings, turned around and gave them to us. At the same token, we turned right around and leased it back to the federal government as a paying situation. Then we had, well, that was, that was it. Mayor, I think the biggest thing that's happened out there in my time was the, was the fire hall. We dedicated it, brand-new fire hall that they needed desperately at that airport and in South Gaston. UPS, FedEx, been working on that, I know he did for years. We just can't become a hub for the southeast in order to get UPS and FedEx, but it's ongoing, we won't stop trying to do that. He changed all the fuel out there for more profit, which was, you might think it was a little bit, but when you consider these 130s coming in, how much they use, plus all the privates, we're making some pretty good money to sustain that airport. I think in my time, and, and in flying on the old systems of GPAs, we got that ILS, L, ILS system out there, it makes it a lot safer for aircraft to come in, safer for the pilots, and meant a whole lot to the operations in general. But truthfully, I just listed those things as a memo to myself, in my opinion only. But if you're gonna complain and go to the paper and tell us all this stuff, I don't understand why you don't come forth, or the people, and volunteer the situation to improve it. Either that or run for office and improve it that way. I don't know, it was just on my mind, I want to get those out there, I know it was haphazard, but we have come a long way at that airport, and if you don't believe it, go out there and look yourself, and quit reading the newspaper and trying to make a decision that we're not doing anything out there. Thank you.
I have an announcement here. I know this is tax season, and the, our SVP has different areas that they do taxes, especially for seniors. Uh, there's, uh, they have a site in Rainbow City, Hotel East Gaston, they have one in Glencoe, and they have one in, in Gaston. There's some in local areas, but they also have, um, these locations. Uh, and this is, uh, this is gonna be to Councilman Worthy, a challenge. Carver Museum. Carver Museum is a museum that can be very, how do I say, very instrumental in the community over there. It's a museum that is sitting idle, there's nothing happening there, and they could have a lot of, uh, tours and things coming there, exhibits coming there. So my challenge to District Three is to, uh, and it's not a part of the city, even though it's housed in a community, in the community center, but it's not a part of the city's budget of finance. So I challenge District Three to find people or that board that's handling Carver Museum to make it active, so that the community, the children, and even people coming to visit will be able to see that museum. That museum could end up being just like the museum we have downtown.
Absolutely.
So I challenged, uh, District Three.
And I accept that challenge.
Thank you. I call for a motion to adjourn.
Go move.